You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 24th, 2023 meeting of the La Porte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
I'd like to call the La Porte County Council regular meeting to order. If you have any cell phones, please turn them off. I'm guilty. I need to do that, too. Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution from which it stands, our nation, our mother, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Keel.
Present.
Councilman Yagelski.
Present.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Present.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Craka.
Present.
All seven are here.
Thank you. We're looking for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a few modifications, starting with items one and two under old business. I'd like to remove those from the agenda as well as in the section of new business under La Porte County Building Maintenance, the first group totaling $38,250. Remove that as well.
Under new business?
Under new business.
It's under red.
Additional appropriation.
I was gonna say.
It'll be the first group under La Porte County Building Maintenance totaling $38,250.
Take that off.
Yep.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to add under new business to discussion with the emergency, I'm sorry, messing up, the economic development, how to pay. Any discussion about that, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And may I ask?
Yes, sir.
May I also add under new business, a favorable vote for the sewer repair at the fairgrounds that occurred during the fair, and then that line needs to be replaced.
Any other modifications?
The news is already on there.
Mr. President, if you could just change the typo in the first line from June 26th to July 24th.
Wow. All right. Do you have the updated version where I have July 24th on it? In the paragraphs? Thank you. Okay, so the first correction is in the first paragraph, change the date to today's date. The next one is under old business. We've removed old business. Under new business, we've added two things. We've added economic development. We'll have a discussion on that. And then we also have for sewer repair at the fairgrounds is number four. Going on to additional appropriations under La Porte County Building Maintenance, we are removing the first group, which totaled $38,250.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you. You go forward. Approval of the June 26th, 2023 regular meeting minutes?
Motion approved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none? Motion forward. Public comment. Would anybody from the public like to come up and speak?
I guess it's time. George Callis, Toronado Drive, La Porte, Indiana. Been coming a year or so. I guess it's my time to speak or say something anyway. Fairgrounds. Good job, everybody. First shovel, what, three months ago? And the building's up and done and used, right? Three months? Yeah, okay.
On the bathroom.
On the restrooms, yes.
Restrooms, right? Restrooms?
The restrooms.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Congratulations to Highway Department, the Maintenance Department, all working together to get it done. I think everybody worked together. Good job. I think that should be done everywhere, but it doesn't seem like it is. Maybe somebody, maybe some of the departments may loan the treasurer a couple people so they can come in, you know, four to six and post everything that comes in that night that's dropped in the box. Maybe they could loan somebody a couple hours. I don't know if that's legal, whatever. I don't know. Okay? My opinions. I gotta hold down because my wife says I talk with my hands, so. Congratulations to Mrs. Stevens for getting everything straightened out a little bit. Late payment on the insurance. I think that's kind of unacceptable, especially since, hell, we want them to give us money. We don't want to be late, even though it's a different, different kind of, and any bills late shouldn't happen. For this building, I think we'll be paying for this building and paying forever on this building. It's, I guess it started by a mistake. It's going to end with a mistake, and I guess we just got to live with that. And what I really came to say is we need to, and if I say something that's illegal, you'll stop me, right?
You won't say anything illegal.
Okay. You guys are all going to get paid on Friday, per se, $1,000 round figures. Taxes are going to come out. You're going to get 750. And by looking, half of you should put in 20% into a savings account. Maybe the two guys on the outside only put 10% in the savings account, right?
Oh, I'm out of it. Thank you.
Well, you can.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George. So what I'm trying to say is let's do that with everything. Let's not just do it with our salaries. Let's do it like, what did I write down? I forget. I gotta look back.
Call the rainy day fund.
Pardon me?
Call the rainy day fund. Call the rainy day fund.
Okay. I called the sheriff heat fund, but okay. It's against, it's against the law to put anything in the emergency account, 10%. Is that, did I read that right or hear that?
No.
I didn't? Okay, well.
It's a little more nuanced than that, but it's.
Yeah, we'll be addressing that later. Anyway, it doesn't matter. What I'm saying,
if somebody wants $100,000, give it to them. Don't give it to them that easy. Give them $90,000 and put 10% of that into an account. And my percentages are probably way too high, maybe 5%. This way, at the end of, and I did call the sheriff heat account, at the end of five years. What's that?
He's looking at the sheriff back there going, why are you getting all the money?
I like to do so.
Oh, good. I don't have to do this, then. Out of our budget, excuse me, out of budget, our taxes collected in the treasurer's office, if I got my figures right, is about $140 million a year, strictly tax money. If you take 5% of that and put it away, that's $7 million a year, strictly from tax money. There I go with my hands. Tax money. That doesn't include the casino, doesn't include the wind tax, doesn't include the whatever ARP or whatever other taxes are. Just take that money, and at the end of five years, you've got $35 million in money that's without the juice or without the interest. At the end, and I know, don't, don't laugh and say it can't be done until at least I'm done. Anyway, then you can laugh at me. But I think that should just go automatic. Nobody's losing money. Nobody has to skimp money. We're not skimping. We just have to quit the waste. We don't need a, I'm afraid to say it. We don't need a $50,000 truck to move a trailer once a year. We need a, there I go again, an old sheriff's car to use it and give him the brand new $50,000 truck. Okay. Now, now who wants to say I'm all wrong and all wet and crazy?
Mr. Callis, I would just point out, and I don't disagree with your theory, but that 140 million that the county collects is not county income. That gets distributed to Westville and Wantatah, La Crosse, and Michigan City and La Porte.
Schools.
Schools. We're collecting for a whole lot of agencies, including recycling, libraries. So that's a much smaller figure, but in theory, it could still work.
In theory, you guys have $40 million you got to work with out of that 150. But you could still wiggle around. Give them their money. But if you're going to give them 100 billion, well, find another five million, put someplace else, and take it out of your budget.
We do have what we call a rainy day fund or an emergency reserve fund that has about just short of $10 million.
Okay, well, that's not enough. He needs 50.
Wow, I agree.
Right? So, so that's what I'm trying to say. Just don't, don't, just because we have it, don't mean we have to spend it. I mean, we do have to spend it. How do I say it? But put a little bit back. So in five years, when he needs to start building or anybody, a fire, well, I don't pertain here, but that's all I'm trying to say. Maybe don't give everybody everything they want. Skimp, skimp is not the right word. Cheat them a little bit. Make them figure out how to get rid of it.
We're gonna use the word frugal.
Okay, there's a good word.
It'll come in handy at budget hearings tomorrow morning.
Mr. Mr. Callis, if you'll turn around just slightly and look over your right shoulder, you'll see Mr. Fitzpatrick back there.
Yeah.
Asking how he did this morning.
They were frugal? Okay, well, all right.
We gave it all to Mr. Heek.
Sure he didn't get enough either. Okay, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for being so patient. All these meetings that you haven't spoken, and you've built up to this. Thank you.
Yeah, but I'm still nervous. I still don't understand. We have to go, we got to go over there. We have to ask permission, and we got to come over here, and you got to send the back over there. I don't understand all that, but that's.
That's government. That's, I understand.
Is there anybody else in the public in the room that would like to speak? And if you're on Zoom and you would like to speak, you'll have to do a raise your hand. Seeing no one in the room? Seeing no hands up?
Mr. Rosenbaum.
The comment is closed? Yes.
I was trying to get in before. That's fine. I think at this time, we should have a moment of silence for Mr. DiMartino's father.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're moving on to department head reports. Is there any department heads that would like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Feel like I was just here. Oh, I was. Okay, Lynn Swanson, La Porte County Coroner. Thought I'd give you a little update on where we're at, on what our office has been doing. I've currently hired three new deputies who begin school on September 8th. I am also, I've also hired the coroner from Washington County. She's relocating to La Porte County, so she has resigned her position there, and she's coming to work for us as a deputy coroner. So that's going to be a huge gain for us. As far as deaths so far this year, we're, as of the end of, as of the end of June, at a total of 185, which is 30 more than last year at this time. Breaking it down, suicides are at six, overdoses 21, natural deaths 141, motor vehicle accidents 13, homicide one, accident by fire one, accident by a dog bite one, and accident by asphyxiation one. So far for the month of July, we have 18 deaths, so we're going to be just over 200 by the end of this month. And then I want somebody, if they could, please to explain to me again about my non-reverting account. I had put in a request for permission to spend and was told that I have to advertise. I don't even know what that means because I've never had to do that.
Did you ever talk to them? You ever talked to them?
Yes. Yeah. Any amount of funds that are not appropriated have to be appropriated unless statute says otherwise, and your account is not one that statute allows you to spend without an appropriation. So it may have been done that way in the past, but it shouldn't have been. So it has to be appropriated first.
So, so what, I don't know what, I don't even understand what that means because we don't have a budget for that account.
Which is why. So when you don't have a budget, that's unappropriated funds. So the council has to approve it for appropriation. So they have to publicize it like we do each month before we do the additional appropriations in the paper. That's what publicizing is.
We'd have to review it to see if it's any different than what Rhonda's saying.
The best example, Ms. Swanson, would probably be the three quarters perpetuation fund. She's got a whole lot of money that she has pretty much total control over, but she says, I'd like to spend 60,000 on this fund for something. It's on our agenda. It's almost an automatic approval because it is her account. Obviously, it's got to be a legal purpose.
She's saying it's the opposite.
By statute, the recorder does not need that appropriated at all.
And she still comes in front of us all the time.
Permission to spend is what we get.
Yep.
She has complete control of it, but she may choose to.
Permission to spend should make her come here. She has to come in front of us.
Yep.
By your rule, perhaps, not by statute is all I'm saying, which is correct, which I sent an email about a few minutes ago. But the clerks' fund does have to be appropriated, which I just found out a few minutes ago as well. You'll see the emails when you get to them.
Okay, so what you're saying is when I have money come into that account, I have to appropriate it to a specific account if I want to be able to spend it?
No.
Possibly ask permission to.
Right, right.
Sometimes it just.
No, that's not true.
Not by statute is, it isn't true. So we can talk to Mr. DiMartino, and he can get back to you, but by statute, that is incorrect.
I don't know if he, I don't know if he has a copy of it, but.
Well, I have a copy of it. I can get a copy of it, but not right now. Let's not do this on the fly because I don't want to give bad advice.
I agree.
If it's on our agenda, you at least have a public record that you're going to spend that money. That's 90% of the battle right there.
So for, for next month, to be on next month's agenda, just let us know what the amount, and we're going to be publicizing usually by the ninth or 10th of the month. So at that time period, so if you can get.
Well, I thought that's what I did when I sent the.
No, it happened just after we did the appropriations. The email that I remember seeing came in just, we had already printed out the appropriations, and we couldn't, we couldn't amend it. Too late to amend it.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Just trying to clarify because.
No, it's.
Seems to change from.
And, and a lot of them are different. So they're not, I mean, every one, you got to, you got to read the statute or the ordinance, whatever set it up, because all of them have different rules and different things to them. They're not all alike. All right. We provide, if I may, Mr. President, we provide to the newspaper 13 days before the council meeting, I believe it is, an advertisement that reports to the public the requests, the appropriation. And that's what, that's what needs to be provided to us by the deadlines that in the email that Rhonda sends out, the advertisement of an additional appropriation, an authorization to spend, the council's approval of that spending.
Is there any change in your email from what you sent, the amounts or anything? So we'll have that for the next month.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other department head in the room that would like to speak, and then we'll go up? I know. I, I see the hands on Zoom, so thank you. Just please be patient. We'll get to you.
Connie Grammerosa, La Porte County Commissioner.
Mike Pollen, Building Commissioner.
So we're here before you because I, as I've spoke to a lot of you independently about the MS4 position. And so one of the things that we have talked about is having three different individuals that are already working for the county takeover department and do three different parts of the chop. So I'm going to pass it on to you, Mike.
And I'm here, I'm the technical guy, so I can answer any questions that you all might have about that.
So if you want to just give a breakdown of what each one of you are going to do.
Okay, so there are two people from the Soil and Water Conservation District that Connie and I met with and discussed the possibility of division of duties. One of them would be administration, financials, running the permitting software, depositing bonds, returning bonds. The other guy would be the field inspector that performed the majority of the coordinator function, complaints, construction sites, stuff like that. And then the third person, which would be me, would oversee the program, deal with outside agencies like Army Corps, IDIM, DNR, audits, pre-litigation, litigation, kind of like an operator function. But basically, the whole ball divided into three different parts.
And the other two guys are?
I can name them.
Yeah.
Chris Havens, the district manager at the SWCD, and the other guy.
Paul Vicari.
Oil and Water. Paul Vicari. We met him once. We entered, we interviewed him. He's also with the SWCD.
Yeah. As I said earlier this morning, during budget hearings, I, for one, would support this in a trial basis for the rest of this year, starting August 1st. So we're looking at five months. It's $25,000. They already had budgeted 60. Find out if this will work because if these three guys can get together and, and work as a team, I think it's a great deal for us because it saves us 40% on the $60,000 salary if we hire somebody from the outside. And we have three people we can call if we have an issue. It's the one person. Somebody's out of town or on vacation, sick. There's two guys still in that department to cover. I, I think it's a tremendous idea. I'm glad you're finally bringing it forward.
I did think of something else. We're missing a fourth individual, and that, the most important person, is one of you to serve on a board of directors, to oversee, to help oversee the program and be part of the stakeholders and the decision-making process. What that's going to do, it's going to make better communication, less fragmentation, more efficiency, less redundancies of us having to go to commissioners and explain something, go to the council and explain something because you're already in it. You're already helping. This, this program needs to be rebuilt. It's completely destroyed. It's, it's been this way for a while now. It, it, it needs a lot of work. It needs to be rebuilt. And I think to do it right and have the best results, we should have oversight, one person being the fiduciary body, one of y'all decide and assign someone, the executive, one of the commissioners, and then the third person could be a qualified department head, could be myself, health department, highway engineer, whoever has the credentials to do it. And I can answer any other questions.
To me, that's very important because at one point, we did have a board, and then they kind of did away, and they went away with having the board, and then we just had like a appointed department head. And then this would actually give a lot of oversight if we went back to having a board again. And so, you know, if we can get the approval to go ahead and move forward with this, because then we would be bringing it back in-house, and then we could work on the next couple weeks of just creating a board for it.
A question. Do you have any concerns that this is going to overburden the three individuals who already have existing job duties? Is this, could this be too much on them at some point, or do you guys feel that that's not an issue?
It could be. You know, I did this years ago, and at that time, there were times of the year when it was rough. Springtime, heavy rains, flooding, you're on overtime. You're on Saturdays. It's, it's not a pleasant time. So, yeah, that's a good comment.
And in talking to all three of them when we all interviewed, one of the things that we did discuss was that there would be Saturday hours. There would be overtime in the evening because they actually cannot do their job and do this job at the same time. So there will be added part-time hours to this.
I understand your, Mike, your comment, excuse me, I'm sorry. I understand your comment, but it went a little too far. Highway Department has snowstorms. They go through battles. They, they live out here. I meant, we've got other departments EMS, because it comes with the job. It is not, it's a five-month trial. Let's see how it goes. We won't overbear for five months. Not like it's going to be a long time. See if it works. That's all.
Yeah.
I'm speaking with Paul out of Soil and Water. What he's doing right now is essentially a part-time role where he also has an outside consulting business, which he is considering to push to the side as taking this on when it was initially brought to his attention and for consideration.
Do we need a motion to approve?
I think we have to, it's not an agenda, so we're going to have to motion to.
We're not supporting, we're not spending money.
We're not spending any money. You're just within the budget. I would make a motion that we approve this concept and that three of you, four of you, move this thing forward so that you can get started by August 1st. You look into the last five months of the year, and then we reconsider.
Second.
I'd like to possibly add that we do a three-month review.
I think that's a good idea, so that way.
Just, we just do something quick. Also, we'll, we'll have, we'll also get to a name for a board shortly. We just, it's news to us. I'd like everybody's input. And, and, you know, I don't want to hold a month, but as long as we can get at least one person that wants, would like to be involved in.
I think Mr. Cunningham says he has some openings. Seriously, you got some time.
I know all three of the individuals. I think they're going to be a great team working together.
If you would like to do that, that's fine.
I would be more happy.
I recommend it.
Then that's fine if everybody else agrees.
Kind of had to do a double take on that one.
So you would help join us in the next week or two just to kind of run it. Okay, we appreciate it.
As long as he can bring a scooter, he's okay.
I'll bring him a slice of pizza, too.
Okay, um, just to, let's just do this by vote. If all, if all agree, Devole Cunningham serve on the board.
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay.
We already had a motion of support to prove this. We got to vote on that, too.
So the motion of support for this program, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Okay, that also, now the motion.
You're off and running. Good luck.
Thank you. Mr. President, can we ask Coroner Swanson to come on up? Again?
Yes. And then we're going to go to, is that Heather? Heather, we're going to go to Heather Stevens.
So the coroner non-reverting fund is established by ordinance, and it requires appropriation from this body. And it's, and there's specific things or uses for the money. Body bags, supplies, transportation, mileage, whatever's in the ordinance. So it needs to be published.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're good now?
Do you have a copy of that ordinance?
I do not.
Can we?
Yeah, it's 36.27. It's on, and one of our ones that are actually uploaded online. And I'll, I'll get it to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, now Heather Stevens, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, great. I, I think my question may be for Rhonda Graves. I believe that the, per the email that I received from you this afternoon, I am basically in the same boat as Coroner Swanson, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, then we'll, we'll do what's necessary. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Comment by Ms. Yagelski?
Sorry, I forgot to get, get this in. With the MS4 and paying the MS4, are any, I'm sorry, for any of those county employees paying 40 hours a week?
Yeah.
So what are they going to get paid for when they work the MS4? Are, are you looking at council? Or are you looking at? I'm looking for anybody. I'm not, run out there. I'm sorry. I can't look. Because there's IRS rule that we can't do. That just came up here last month's meeting when I said we couldn't do it because you're getting paid.
They'd be getting paid overtime.
They'll be getting paid, yes, sir. All three will. So there is an IRS ruling that says we can't do that under the fair wage law. Now, you can pay time and a half for it, which would use the funds that we say we have saved up. So I'm just throwing it out there.
This is true if they're hourly, correct? But not if they're salary?
If they're, if they're exempt, then, well, it depends upon, some are hourly exempt, some are not. So we have to look at the job classification. So I'm just bringing it up. I'm not saying you have to sell it tonight, but I'm just throwing it out there for discussion. That's all.
I think two of them are department heads and salaried, and one of them is less than full-time now.
I'm just asking, I don't know. Okay, no, we'll, we'll, I think. No, I'm sorry that they're not here to hear it, but we'll do that. I can't tell.
Dakota Ulller, it looks like.
Is that, is that Dakota with his hand up?
Yes.
It is.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, council. Dakota Ulller awaits and measures. I wanted to take a moment to express my internal gratitude to have a department head like Mike Quinn. Believe me when I say that I consider myself extremely fortunate to have had the opportunity to train under Mike Quinn. Thank you, Mike, and Chris, so much for your genuine commitment to the community. Thank you, Mike and Chris, so much for your genuine commitment to the community and promote equity between buyers and sellers in the marketplace. Thank you for the dedication to the residents and consumers of LaPorte County over the past 18 years. Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you for.
I too, just want to echo, and I think we missed it when he retired, but kudos to Mike Quinn for all the, all the work he's done and everything and Waits and Measures, he did a great job.
So just to repeat.
Mike.
Yeah, I don't want to take away from Mike Quinn because that definitely is exceptional, what he's done and created for us. Now, we had a comment about MS4, we were concerned about the number of hours that people would be working if they're also an employee so that we don't get into an overtime situation. We just need a review of their exempt employees. And so we just wanted to make sure you were made aware of that, we just need to shore that up.
I think Paul's the only one that's in question.
Who is?
Paul.
Paul Vicari.
Yes.
Check the status like any S.
If he's exempt or not exempt, is he an hourly employee, then he falls into overtime, whereas you're exempt.
And so is Chris.
Right, and so is Chris.
Yeah, I agree, we need to check that.
And, but right now, I mean, I know that he gets paid half. His salary is coming from a part-time office position and the other portion is getting paid out of a grant. And so the whole idea of doing this was the fact that at some point, and you all know from this, the grants don't always come back every single year. And I mean, he, he has got a tremendous amount of information and has done this in the past. And for us to lose somebody like him with the wealth of information that he has, and I mean, he's ready to be up and running. I mean, he's looking at a whole bunch of projects and different things that he can do to really enhance the county. I would hate to lose.
We're not looking to lose.
All we want to know is what the fair wage law says, that's all we're saying.
We'll make sure that we check that in and then we'll, you know, Earl will be meeting with us next week so then once he could report back to you guys. Would that be okay?
That's fine. We appreciate you coming back into here this far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other department heads in the room or on? Seeing none, we move to liaison reports. We're going to start from Mike Mullenauer.
I have nothing right now, thank you.
We go to Mr. Karanka.
The one I'll highlight is the Soil and Water District Legislative Breakfast that had a presentation on July 12th. Not only a whole lot of hospitality, but a great program from an individual that is, seems to have done a lot for his community in South Side of Chicago.
Was very good. I just want to spend my time focusing on the fair. The fair was originally, put this in perspective, how long this fair's been going on? 1845, so Abraham Lincoln became president in 1861. So that gives you an idea of how long the fair's been going on. It was a fantastic fair, we had a little bit of rain, a couple of great concerts, a monster truck show. And I will say, once you've seen one monster truck show, you pretty much don't need to see another one for a little while. But it was great, it was great fun, the, I think they had some record attendances. Kudos to all the people on the fair board. The maintenance department, the people out there that put it, helped put it on, make it all come together. Larry and his crew with the, getting the bathroom done. It was just, it's incredible and the investment that the fair board is putting back into the grounds. And we'll have more for you in the future on that. But the money that they make goes back into the grounds out there. The other thing is, is 4H Purdue Extension is running very smooth, things are good. The attendance is up and we challenged the new director with some big numbers, so we hope that there's going to be some good outreach out there and Adam and I are working on that, so, thank you.
I said adding the extra day was nice too, that's a good benefit.
I'm just going to, I'll go last, so.
This month's meeting, some of the highlights, redevelopment commission meeting, which by the way, we have a meeting at 4:00 PM on Wednesday this week. Yep, and there's also a rail committee meeting at 3 o'clock. I also attended the Soil and Water Breakfast with several of my colleagues and also attended a NERPC full commission meeting this month. I've also spent a lot of time reaching out to the departments that I'm a liaison to and reviewing their budgets requests with them. And finally, I wanted to take a second to talk about CAC, the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission. I think most of us up here are familiar with them. Most of us council members and all of the commissioners have signed the CAC Ethics Pledge, in some cases multiple times, I'm one of those, which says we'll pursue ethics training for our elected officials and employees upon taking office. However, right now, the county does not have an appointee to CAC and we've provided ethics training to maybe only one or two employees. I don't know about 700 in the past few years, is my understanding. I attended a CAC meeting a couple of months ago. They reported that in Gary, they're handing out hundreds of ethics handbooks. In East Chicago, they're working on identifying new staff members to become ethics trainers for their departments. And here in our county, we've not done too much on this front so far. The county council can't direct employees to get ethics training, but we can use our positions to encourage that commissioners appoint individuals to CAC and set up ethics training. We all felt that it was the right thing to do when we signed the ethics pledge when we campaigned and now it's time for us to make good on that promise. So I'd ask that my colleagues join me in respectfully requesting that the commissioners take up the matter of CAC ethics training at their next meeting.
Just for a point, I think Joey Winski was the last appointment that we had on there.
Yep. I believe so. It's been a little while.
I think it has, but.
Are you looking for a motion of support to that?
I would love that.
Motion of support.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Yagowski.
Yes, sir. Kind of have a little problem because we've gone through a lot of changes here, so I'm on my, the county highways, another person I'm talking to, so. We've, over the years, we've had our last scrap sale, which was 2017. I know this doesn't excite too many people, but right now, number one scraps going about $500 a ton, huge amount of money, we have a lot of scrap in the pile. Because we also went through changes of attorneys, Mr. DiMartino helped me out a couple of years ago. We've tried to attempt to have a sale. It's a little complicated because you have to separate it. If you don't, nobody's going to come in to do the work and there's ways to do it. So anyway, I'm just letting everybody know that I've, because the commissioner's attorneys knew that I asked DiMartino to, to help with this situation. We're under, it's a, it's a very complicated, we're looking into millions of dollars of scrap out there. We're not looking at just 10, 15, 20,000, but we're looking at a million dollars of scrap out there. There's vehicles that are out there, believe it or not, are old trucks that they want to buy and sell to third world countries. So there's, there's all kinds of options we have out there, but we don't have the expertise right now and we need some help and I'm just asking the council that we, that I'm going to use Mr. DiMartino for guidance on that along with the commissioner's attorney, but he's really new at this. That's about it.
On the fair topic, I would like to say this, that again, as Randy said, excellent job. But the fair builds lifelong relationships to 4H. Some of those kids are going to be friends 50, 60 years from now. And I can assure you that's true because I was born and raised in Hannah. And one of the reasons I go to the fair every year is because I see people that I was in 4H with 50 or 60 years ago. So not only does it build new relationships, each year it sustains old relationships and many of you see somebody at the fair you haven't seen since last year's fair. And it's a valuable asset to keep our community. LaPorte County is the second largest in geographic area and the fair brings us all together one side at one time.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Thank you, Mr. Yagowski and all of the members of the council. I'm just going to be very quick. Involved with RDC, involved with the FMEC with the fairgrounds. Spent several days at the fair, spent lots of money in the auction at the fair. Got to see a lot of students, got to see a lot of kids I knew from baseball, whatever. It was, it is an amazing friendly environment and experience to see people who, and like he said, sometimes you haven't seen before, but one of the biggest things that we did see and hear was the compliments. And all it took was painting a couple of buildings because they didn't know of all the underground wires, the underground plumbing and sewage that were put in for water and sewer. So they saw the new building, a lot less porta-potties, which also helped the fragrance in the air. And so it, there's just been a lot of win-win situations, especially in this past month for that, so. With that being said, let's move on to correspondence.
There is, there is no correspondence.
Okay. Just to note, we've been getting some emails. I don't know if all the, all the council members are receiving in support of the sewer program. More support than the other, so I'm just sharing that that's what we've been. I don't know if anybody else has, but I know that I have.
Yes.
Okay. So we're moving on to ordinance resolution. The first one is ordinance number 2023-7, an ordinance converting the LaPorte County Emergency Reserve Fund into the LaPorte County Rainy Day Fund.
Motion to read by title only.
We have a motion to read by title only.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, none, okay.
Before we entertain, I'd also like another motion, let me just bring you all up to speed on this as to why, if that's okay?
I was hoping we could talk about that now.
Now, now, before you go ahead, okay. So this is substantially similar to the Emergency Reserve Fund. We were the only county that had an emergency reserve fund. Every other county has it as a rainy day fund. The issue with the prior fund was that we automatically put 50% of riverboat funds into that. And the problem with that is it could run up against some statutory caps. For instance, at certain years, you're only supposed to have allowed up to 10% relative to the tax, but the budgeted tax amount. And this year, we're still on a 15%, but then it's going back to 10%. So what this statute now does to comply with a, with a strict letter of the law is it says, hey, auditor's office, you know that we're, we're moving 50% in, you have to go ahead and take a look at this and make sure that we do not exceed the 10% or 15% cap of money that can be transferred. We still have the super majority, so it has to be by two-thirds vote because the whole purpose of this fund is so that we have fund for rainy day. And we, we would ask that for everybody to be able to make an informed decision that if we're going to spend monies out of this fund, that you get some type of financial analysis before you go ahead and make that decision so you know how long it'll be to take to get paid back. So you know what I mean? So you're able to, to meet the requirement of trying to build this fund up to $15 million. Otherwise, it's the same. And then, once this fund's in place, the next month, you can go ahead and if you decide to read by title only, what I didn't hear is a motion to suspend the rule if you only want to do it on one reading.
We're going to read title only, then we can do that.
No, you need, no, you first need to do a motion to suspend the rule. Hold on one second. So, and then you'll be able to, once this is in place, you'll be able to appropriate for the flood project like we've been trying to do for the last couple of months. Okay? Before we get too far. So on the same question, I would say, because everybody claims to have been in such a long time, we, it did start out as a rainy day fund. We were advised at one point many years ago for different reasons to make an emergency reserve fund. This was the money that was from the toll road. And we took the toll road money and put it into what we called the rainy day fund. And we started out before the state of Indiana did. And the state of Indiana made their resolution because they had cashed that they started a rainy day fund. Along the way, this got changed because of other technicalities, but things changed from time to time. But I'm just mentioning the fact that this was originally a rainy day fund. Yeah, it's been back and forth.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, and we just want, you know, statute change, we just want to comply.
Motion to suspend the rules and hear both readings tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion carries to suspend the rules. Now can we have a reading of the title only? Mr. Auditor, do you?
This is an ordinance converting the LaPorte Emergency, LaPorte County Emergency Reserve Fund into the LaPorte County Rainy Day Fund.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
I just, the one comment I want to make, it states, there's a sentence here in section three. Furthermore, the council directs the auditor to prepare and present an estimate no later than December 1st of each year determining what county funds are available to be transferred into the rainy day fund. May, sometimes we don't have a December meeting. Should that date be sooner? Just ask it.
What, I guess what would be the latest date in the year that you would be able to determine the funds so you know that you're not exceeding? So could, we could, we could, we could, we could change the language, we can amend the language to be the last meeting of the calendar year? Would that, would that be?
Yeah, because we generally don't have a December meeting, so that would make.
We generally don't, but the last couple of years we have.
Yeah, but they've been, you know, added on.
So the last regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, so that would be appropriate, just put up November.
So we'll have that then if we.
Does this require council action? Have the council in November.
That's actually.
Regularly scheduled. You mean right now?
Well, no, not right now, but this December 1st thing, is it, is that something that would require council action or is it just keeping them?
No, just keeping informed, yeah.
Is the, whether there's a meeting in December important or not?
So, so we're talking about changing that to the last meeting in, the regular scheduled meeting in November?
Right, but we're going to be looking at, the purpose of that is so we're looking at to the next year as to the funding for the fund. So it wouldn't need, they wouldn't need action, so. So it could stay at December 1st and you'll have it before. Whatever you all want, if there's going to be a motion to amend, we'll need a motion to amend, whatever.
Before December 1st?
No, it says no later than December 1st. So it can be regular scheduled.
In November?
It's our regular scheduled meeting, if we order a special meeting after that. Mr. President. All right, I'm good.
Mr. Yagowski?
All the way from Mr. DiMartino. So here's, here's one of those small problems because before we knew that we couldn't put money in this fund because different rules, language changed, we had, we received a settlement check from Westfield for, I'm sorry, from Long Beach, excuse me, I'm sorry, for about 1.1 million that got put into this account. Because we didn't know about this changeover, is that going to affect us any?
When did we receive the bill from Long Beach?
Received it three months ago. Two months, two months ago, I'm sorry, two months ago.
Well, no, because the issue was out of riverboat, right? I believe when we looked at it, it was automatically requiring 50% out of riverboat. We're going to have to look at that money and see, because right now, we're on 15%. So we're going to have to do the math as to your budgeted amount.
Correct.
And see what the 15% is, because we're in a 15% number right now.
The state board of accounts took exception to us automatically making the transfers. It wasn't so much that they didn't agree with us making transfers, we just needed to do it procedurally, not just automatically.
Yeah, even though, even though our state legislators do it, but that's another.
But that's up to them.
I know.
And I would say that the cap that we're, we're, the max that we're allowed to contribute into the rainy day fund each year is currently 15% of our total budget. It doesn't mean each individual budget, the total budget as a whole.
And so that's 40, 40 million, is that the number that we heard? So 15.
Yeah, 43 million.
Yeah.
43 million. So at one point, just, I'm just putting out there, I'm not saying it's going to make a change, but we did transfer that money into the, into the, into the account.
Okay, yeah, I think we should be okay. And if we go over, then we're going to have to adjust down and some of that riverboat money will not go in the next few months. We still have five months to deal with.
We're skimming, George.
We haven't been getting as much as we used to.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I don't think we need to amend it.
As the first reading.
Yeah, I'm good.
All those, any other further discussion or, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Do the second reading.
It's 100%, so therefore we can go do the second reading. We need another motion?
Motion by title only.
No, okay, got to do that, motion by title only, do I have a second? We have a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This is still an ordinance converting the LaPorte Emergency Reserve Fund into the LaPorte County Rainy Day Fund.
Now we need a.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries, thank you very much, that's the first ordinance. The second ordinance is a resolution number 2023-7A, a resolution approving the designation The second ordinance is a resolution number twenty twenty-three dash seven A, a resolution approving the designation of Laporte County as a vote center county. Is there comments from?
We need to, need to read the resolution by title only?
We have a motion to read the resolution by title only. Do we have a second?
Second, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. A resolution approving the designation of Laporte County as a vote center county.
We have a presentation in our last meeting, so I'm not sure if we need um any further comments, but if you, you'd like to share a thought?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any co, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. We're gonna be moving on to the next resolution. It's number twenty twenty-three dash seven B, declaratory resolution for S and G Partners LLC for Real Estate and Salmon Company, Inc., doing business as Peepers by Peeper Specs, economic revitalization area.
Motion by title only.
Second.
We have a motion by title only and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Hearing none, uh, motion carries.
Resolution of the Laporte County Council identifying and declaring portions of Laporte County, Indiana be designated as an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Coast Section six dash one point one dash twelve point one dash one et sic.
Okay. I've, I've asked, um, it was gonna be written to come up just for a quick moment to explain what, what this resolution is due.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Peepers uh had applied, requested a tax abatement a couple of years previous that's gone stale at the suggestion of Attorney uh Martino. We, kind of the process is to recreate or recreate again the economic revitalization area. This keeps everybody square and honest. It also gave the petitioner an opportunity to update. They're gonna spend a little more money. They're good company. I mean, just, just uh just for information purposes, their, their salaries are real strong. These guys are at five point three million and for eighty-one people right now, it's sixty-five thousand average. So it's, it's good company. Attorney Novak's here to answer any questions and give you any more details. You know, this is the first step for the tax abatement. The next would be at the next meeting with public hearing and the confirmatory resolution. At that time, I will request that the representatives from the company are here to answer any direct questions that the council might have.
Okay, so we're, we're creating the revitalization area.
We're recreating it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you very much for the explanation as well. Okay, moving on. We're now into new business. Consider approval of council president's authorization to higher replacement position for community corrections field officer and a Laporte County Health Department nurse.
Do it, do it.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? None? Uh, motion carries. Discuss recent changes at Purdue University Northwest Westville Campus. Councilman Mark Yagelski, please.
Thank you. Well, I got a, had a two hour conversation with the Assistant Chancellor out here. He's very, he's been there since day one, or not since, I mean, his lifetime. I shouldn't say day one, since his lifetime. Very committed, very serious about his job. Um, he understands what we were talking about. He really believes in this, what, the same way. What his problem, of course, comes into is that Purdue, like other areas, our uh youth population's dropping. The baby boomers are now moved on and um college education has gone, uh, college education levels of enrollment have gone down. So he says that a lot of that has to do with the fact that uh that we're, to make those changes that keep dropping the four-year programs. In ten years, we've lost two thirds. As everybody knows, as I told him, if you keep dropping more, there's more or less reasons to go. You're, it, it to us, it looks like you're robbing Peter to pay Paul and eventually, we're gonna shut one down because that's the direction you guys are going to. He's, but, says, he says, well, they're already put money into to take one of the buildings and demolish it. That's the shape, uh, not Schaefer Building.
Schwartz.
Schwartz Building, um, thank you. Schwartz Building. Because he says that right now, they're not getting the commitments from Purdue University. They're spending a lot of money right now at the campus. So, if everybody's been down at Purdue, they're spending a lot of money at the campus. But he said, he said he was willing to come both to the commissioner and council and talk some more about it, which I think would be good. But um, one of the things that I told him about, I says, with all the situation now, because as children, as long as they believe, when they sign up for a commitment to pay for a college education, they actually have to. Then all of a sudden, they're gonna go, wow, you can get a degree for four years for thirty-five thousand dollars. That's less than right now, a new truck or new car. That, that's one year or more at any major college, one year or more. So I said, I go, we need to start selling that program. I says, the county could work with you on some of that. If you need some help, we would like to help with that so that we, we have a working team. Some of the people who were here a while back, I don't remember, I think Mr. Cunningham was, um, maybe Mr. Novak, but Purdue, we, we, we were really on a standstill of economic development. I think Matt, you went to couples meeting, remember, Mr. Ridden? And they did a thing called incubator idea. And we went there and they had great presentations, great talking, great good points. And with that, that brings in new businesses, small businesses. Those things are really important now with these small mom and pops, jobs that are coming up. Because if you look at economic development, those are really your bread and butter of those. Big jobs are great, but you don't always get the big plans, so you have to bring in small jobs. So he said, he would like to go and start that program again with us so that we get, we get some community involvement because Purdue said they're hurting as much. And I says, well, we would like that for ourselves because our population in the twenty years I've been, has been the same. It's net zero. And that affects all our taxes, it affects all the stuff that comes in because we have not increased population. And even our two cities, like Michigan City, Laporte, have not seen any increases. So he says he's been working on a program like that. We just, just so somebody didn't know, the cities did come to us at one point, we, we contributed, all of us, to be Laporte, Michigan City and, and the county. Seventy-five thousand dollars apiece between the three for three years. We had tried to get that so that we, we could pick a central place like Purdue and build a building cuz they were gonna actually give us the property and help develop it. And after three years, the two entities said, well, we're gonna take our, and go home and we never, we went any further. I would love to see a one-stop shop for Laporte County, but that's another story itself, so. So he wants to get some help from us and I says, great, but we wanna have a commitment that you stop, stop robbing Peter to pay Paul. And if anybody wants to invite him, he's more than welcome to come and talk to commissioners and council. So the commissioners have asked me not to go any further with our statement cuz I did go to a commissioners meeting, until they come to talk and we'll give them a fair shake. Any questions?
No.
Information.
Thank you. Um, now we move on to number three, economic development, and this is um.
Thank you. So this is, this not only economic development, we have a situation here that, we have, we have insurance bills that also didn't get paid and we, cuz we can't transfer money from one, one to the other. But this also will reflect some of the conversation. So years ago, we, we decided, the county decided to uh subcontract out EDC. It's a volatile group and to get county employees to do it, it's very difficult. Other, other entities don't do it. They also, they also sub it out to other, they also sub it out to a subcontractor. It's, it's, it, it works for us that way that um we have more, we have more ability to help control economic development. So with, with that, um, we have always appropriated money in January. We used to have it in the budget for the commissioners, but we took it out of the budget commissioners because we wanted to have equal share of EDC conversation with them. So that allows it to, January to vote for it in January. We have a problem because now we can't, we didn't appropriate the money, we can't pay them, so they had to take it out of professional services. We need to now put, ask for that money to be taken out here cuz we usually do a first payment and we do a second payment after six months. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, a hundred and ten thousand apiece. There shouldn't be a problem with us taking the money appropriated out of a fund that we, that the county can do and then go ahead and put it into the fund and pay the bill. Today, there seemed to be some question of it and I told, I called Mr. Di Martino about it, so I'd like for all of us to discuss that, why we can't do that.
Why can't we?
Now I'm talking to, to Rhonda, cuz I talked to Rhonda today. Or Tim, but Rhonda's the one I talked to on that.
Statutorily not allowed, and it has to do with fund accounting. Um, why have fund accounting if you don't follow it? Is basically what it is.
So we can. Wait, 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 Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Di Martino.
Well. I know that we've done it in the past. And so, and, and I, I mean, economic lit is for economic development.
Absolutely.
And I mean, it was ceded at one time. So I, I guess I don't under, I, I, I don't, I haven't seen the statutory or rule authority to say that that can't be done. There's gotta be a way.
Yes.
That economic development is funded, and so we just have to follow whatever those steps are that the auditor's office sets. I mean, I, I just can't imagine that we can't spend the money. We just have to probably jump through another hoop.
It just needs to be um appropriated, I'm assuming, out of lit economic development. And you can budget it there every year and spend it from there. That's what I was saying.
Yes, why can't we, right, why don't we, just like we, well, you know how we've done that with highway department, that five million dollars? It, you know, it sits in, it's economic, it's from lit. So we can, you can probably do that.
Halfway through the year, we're gonna have to do something cuz they, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we have to have in this fund right now.
We'd make a motion of support that at our next meeting, we have uh two hundred and twenty thousand dollars on the agenda in, between Rhonda and our attorney, they'll figure out statutorily exactly how we have to do that.
Mr. Yagelski, yes.
Get this funded.
We have it set up for next month already. He had asked me.
But we all know about what's going on.
That's a motion of support. And, and just for.
Is it two twenty or is it just one ten?
Twenty for the year.
Is January, is two twenty for the year? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Novak.
You've already dispersed one ten.
No.
No.
That's the thing. The commissioners, so they always come at our January meeting to get that fund.
Right.
No one came. We never gave.
Oh, so, cuz I remember.
They never came.
Rodriguez, she used to come twice a year, yeah.
Yeah, so, right. They changed the contract this year for the first part of the year.
Got it.
And never presented it.
So that's why we didn't fund it, is because no one asked for the.
But there has to be a way that we can get it done, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, and then the other suggestion is while we're doing budget hearings, when we get to lit um economic development, to put that in the budget so that it's done on how you want it.
And it'll be paid directly.
So we'll work on that tomorrow when we get this.
Okay, we'll get it done.
Mr. Di Martino, would you be willing to, to, when you've looked at the statute for this, send it to us so that way we can all see it ourselves as well? I know a lot of questions about this lately.
I don't know that it's statutory cuz the only thing that we're gonna see in statute is what economic, what economic lit could be used for, the eleven categories. I'm assuming that this is some, probably some administrative rule or regulation. Right, I mean.
I don't think so, but I'll share with you what I have. It's in my email.
Okay.
Well, can you report back to us what you find out?
Yeah, absolutely.
The question is, how's the council maintain the control they wanna have if it ends up being budgeted?
Cuz it's.
Budget, but it still takes our appropriation.
Every six months, they don't get the money in January, so we give it to them. They give us, they don't get the money in Ju, July, so every six months. But it's accounted for, it's encumbered at the beginning of the year when you're budgeting it.
We'll figure that.
We don't have to worry about that, next, right?
We'll maintain control. Don't worry.
Mr. President, after the vote, I need to, I need my second point then, okay?
So we have a motion of support and a second on the table, just to take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, anything forward?
Okay, my last, my last part is, I brought it up. So we need to get the thing with the insurance there. We, we cannot not pay insurance bills. So we need to do the same thing. We have to have something that we have in writing that we can transfer money, however it's gotta be, so we can pay these insurance bills.
So I, I wanna talk about that for one sec if we can. I don't know why it's so di, difficult for us to understand what these insurance bills are. I have probably, I spend way more insurance between all my businesses and everything. We should know what these premiums are. I could understand for our self-insured retention that we don't know what the SIR is. But for the actual premiums, that should be something that we should have and should be able to be budgeted. Every year, we have this shortfall in the insurance, you know, accounts over on the commissioner's side. And there's gotta be a way for us to fix it. There just has to be.
We, we did receive a schedule of the insurance premiums. And although they may change next year if there's some increases, but we do now know that the premiums are over two million dollars.
Okay, so why, so why can't that be handled now?
I think it is all being handled, but when the purchase orders are being made, they're being, they're using the wrong account. They were appropriated money in ARP in March and it's never been used because they keep using the wrong.
Somebody needs to talk to them.
Hold on, but, but isn't that, but is that something that, once it gets to the auditor's office, that that's something, hey, you guys are using the wrong, I don't know.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, we cannot though because this is something that we're, we are in limited groups with insurances now, especially nowadays. And so we got to keep the people we have right now, so we gotta pay our bill. So however we pay it, you're preaching to the choir, Mark.
Keep in mind, there was an issue at the end of last year when the former commission um administrative assistant came to the council and asked for money to pay bills and it was reduced by a few hundred, it was reduced, um, uh, I don't know the amount, but it's reduced. And that, we kinda started off in the hole at the beginning of the year, so that kinda makes, that's kinda what made this, this year especially problematic.
Six months into the year, we shouldn't still be in a hole. Just saying, we might have started in a hole, but.
So we, anyway.
We work with department heads, but we don't, we don't request additional appropriations.
Don't know the problem, so we need, we need to not have this happen. So whatever it takes, work with us, call us, talk to us, call me on the phone. We can't have it happen, okay? That's all I'm saying.
Well, let me ask you this. Is the problem with the insurance that we're just not renewing the right time of the year and it doesn't work for our budgetary cycle?
Yes.
So that could be changed.
Yes, just, but we've had, we have asked it. Let me give you an example. We won't get an insurance rate, so after we have a budget hearing. We've asked for, as long as I can remember, Mr. Novak, please change, they can't change it. So we've asked to have some of these things changed. The, there's no way we should be sending, we should be putting a rate in after we've already finalized our budget for.
They said they can't change that. So I don't know if that had any.
Well, I don't.
The bills.
No, I, I would agree with that, Randy, when you're, when you're, when you're bidding out your health insurance cuz that's at the end of the year because you guys are self-insured and you have to look at the prior claims.
Right.
In order to do that. But for regular property and casualty, for things that are straight, um, just like uh premium based where that should be able to be resolved. That, I'm, I'm just saying.
I think that's just some confusion. I don't know, I don't know what the issue was, why things getting, get paid or the counter, what to do.
Well, I mean, I know you have an insurance committee and so I know that John Jones does the property and casualty and GIS does some of the other lines. Maybe we need to really get an answer as to that because it's been a problem the last two, three years.
Yeah, this isn't the first year.
No.
If I can speak on behalf of the auditor's office, since I've been there, I know that when an appropriation has needed to be made or when it's been late, they've came in and said, the commissioner's office has come to say it needs to be paid now, but then we have to wait for the appropriation. So I just don't know if they're looking ahead to see what needs to be appropriated for the correct months.
Why isn't this part of HR as to some sliver? You know, why is this thrown back on the, because?
HR, I don't think handles.
Well, HR don't.
To provide, I know the commissioners would do the purchase orders, but HR is in charge of all the insurance.
No, commissioners, the commissioners are in charge, they actually make the rules for our insurance. That's what goes up and down, that's the way, that's the way.
I understand that they make the rules. But then what, but then where, where's the gap? Where, where, what's the missing link here?
They're gonna strong, the commissioners stick together. They have to, they have to do their job because this, their insurance is part of their program.
But they are doing their job because you guys have insurance.
They had bills that weren't paid and they didn't go back, they didn't come back to ask, we were, we, we've had numerous bills not being paid, that's the problem.
Maybe they're, they're either not getting the notice or they're, they're getting the late, they're getting the notice that, hey, it has to be paid right away. And then they're coming to Rhonda saying, it needs to be paid like now, but everything still has to be appropriated.
Mr. Novak, they, they did receive, I seen them, they received the late payments. They.
I know.
They, they didn't pay them.
They need to.
They didn't come back, they didn't come back. They go, what are we gonna do? We don't have any money to count. That's what they said, commissioners, I'm talking about. They, they run the program, they've always run the program here. It's not been an HR thing, it's been a commissioner situation.
And I'm not saying that to run the program, I'm saying maybe, maybe somebody else needs to be the point person to get the invoices. And when they know that they're not gonna receive it on so-and-so date, they shake the chain and say, what's going on here, either with the, because I mean, this is something that you know is a recurring expense every quarter.
Insurance companies should maybe copy, send a notice also to the auditor's office in addition to.
And you, and, and that can be done.
But Rhonda can pay it.
Yeah, yeah.
But, so there's gotta be something missing and, that's all I'm saying. There's, there's gotta be something missing in the procedure.
I agree.
And the last thing, of course, is this that, you know, we've had meetings that, I don't wanna get into detail because it was an exact session, but we've had meetings to talk about this for, I think it was about seven months ago, uh, about the, the problem with employees, if they, if they have sick or disability, that they get assigned another fruitful work to do so we can control, keep that off the balance sheet. This is getting really bad and we're gonna, we're, we're gonna run out of money. This is not their fault. We're running out of money to pay these bills. It's, it's outrageous. We need to take action. We had a meeting about it, but we not, we have not taken action since that meeting.
Well, what wasn't, when we're looking at a new comp carrier that was actually gonna work on cross-training folks and actually putting back the light duty and they were gonna have.
We, the commissioners, council have to agree, they, they have not, the commissioners, right, or, we have to make the next meeting happen to get that person to go on it.
You know, we got a lot of things going on, Mark. We gotta handle one thing at a time.
No, this is a big.
Then let's take it on and let's.
That's what I brought it up for. This is gonna, we're going to lose this insurance. We're gonna have another insurance bust, not because we didn't pay our bills, because. That's what I brought it up for. This is gonna, we're going to lose this insurance. We're gonna have another insurance plus, not because we didn't pay our bills, because we can't afford it. There's too many people on, on, on the run. So anyway, Mr. President, I think we need to, we decide to make a motion. We form this committee with the commissioners, you work with the commissioner.
There is an insurance committee, and their next meeting is early August.
This is not an insurance meeting. This is to, to form a new group that will, that will, that will, uh, okay.
Here's my comment on that, is that obviously there's something going wrong with the paperwork. That's an administrative function. And, and I think you, someone hit it on the head, and I, and I forget who said, uh, the suggestion, let's make sure a copy goes to the auditor's office. We can make those arrangements tomorrow.
This is not a missed paper, this is about getting people that are.
About the workman's comp separate side of things.
Separate side of it. That means, that's.
Okay.
I'm on my third.
I'm not confused.
I said I'm on my third thing. So we need, this motion is that we get, Mr. President, please work with the commissioners' president, let's get this ball rolling. This is not a, this is not an insurance.
Have a meeting this week with her, so I'll put, put that on my agenda.
That would be great.
Okay.
Just, that'd be fine.
Uh, I mean, if you'd like to do a motion, I'm happy.
No, I don't, I don't, I'll take.
The other thing, I just wanna add this, I believe the commissioners might have paid the first bill out of the wrong account, if I'm not mistaken, because there's a workman's comp account that isn't supposed to be the workman's comp, from what I understand. So we just need to get that all straightened out so that they can keep moving them forward, so.
Before we move on, Mr. Keel has.
I hate to be the guy to dole out homework to people, but perhaps we could, perhaps we could, uh, you guys can summarize the situation here about what went wrong with the insurance payments, the, the facts of the matter, so that way we know exactly what happened, the timelines of when things happened, and then make a recommendation to us about what needs to change procedurally so it doesn't happen again, so that we can put this to bed and be done with it.
Yeah, good idea.
I second that emotion.
That became a motion, and Earl seconded it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Any nays? Okay, moving on. Uh, we're up to number four of new business, sewer repair at fairgrounds.
So I'm asking for a favorable vote, or making a motion for a favorable vote for not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. During the fair, there was a collapse in the sewer line coming from the community building that comes out, makes a turn between there and Commercial One, heads over to the east parking lot and goes in. Um, we had a contractor come out that night, um, kudos to a Delta Three, I think it's called.
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, he's actually on the fair board, came out and, uh, brought his equipment out, made the repair, him and Mr. Parkman worked there, uh, with Larry Levandowski that night. Uh, made the emergency repair right there. Uh, they came out the next day, found another spot that was collapsed, and they ran the camera up through there after they got the majority of, and the pipe is, it's an old clay tile pipe. It's collapsing, and that building has been plagued with sewer problems over the years, and we think this would remedy that, so that's my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Is there, is there, is there a reason that we're doing a motion of support for it as opposed to just going through the normal appropriation process next month? Is there a speed of necessity here?
They can go ahead and get the work going.
The, that.
But does it need to be done?
It needs to be done as soon as possible.
That building, um, that.
It gets rented out.
Rented out, and we cannot.
Events coming up here pretty soon.
We cannot have a backup at an event. So we've got a few week window, which is gonna be before our next meeting, when the next event is in schedule for that building.
I'm, I'm, Mr. Justin, I, Justin, sorry. I, I think we, we saying that, I'm not gonna speak for you, but I believe it's, I think that there should be a president's declaration of emergency. I don't disagree with emergency, but I believe there should be a president's declaration of emergency. Then we can go that way. Otherwise, we wait till next month.
So we're gonna do that every time we do a motion of support?
This is not necessarily an emergency, but it.
Then it can wait till next month.
Well, I mean, you guys traditionally.
Work if we do a motion of support.
You all have traditionally done that, but does, nobody have the thirty-five grand in their budget that they can go ahead, like facilities or something like that, if that's something needs to be done? Is that, and that's on the county's dime, as opposed to where does F M E C go along these things, or what?
There is money in the commissioner's account. I think we can go that way if you wanna go that way.
You know, so I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking, I, I, I don't know.
I think, I think, um, not speaking for facilities, but after this morning, I think he's a little gun-shy now. Spent thirty-five thousand dollars.
I think, I think what Mr. DiMartino says, we can take the money out of there, we can transfer the money at some future point. We're not gonna take the money permanently out of his account. Right now, there's a way to spend the money. Is that what you're, is that what he's saying, or no?
I'm not saying permanently, I'm saying if you, if you need to get the work started tomorrow, I mean, if the air conditioning broke right now, wouldn't he be going ahead and doing that? I, I don't know.
Building, the building's been rented out, let's say, three weeks from now. These guys are willing to do the work on a motion of support, correct, Mr. Novak?
Correct.
So we'll just pass the motion of support, and we.
We put it on next.
Next agenda. Next month and get it paid. They don't expect to get paid in less than thirty days anyway.
My hesitation comes from, we've kinda gotten into a little bit of a bad habit of, of bringing motions of support by surprise, nothing against Mr. Novak, at the last minute before a meeting, and then we're making a commitment without having had time to, to research it or.
You, you looked at the sewer that night.
I'm aware that it's broken ass.
Well, it has to get paid, and it gotta be paid for, so.
If, if I can add one aspect to this mix, mix, Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, um, we do handle, so I'm not commenting broadly on the need, if that's your, yours to prioritize and, and spend, or but we did survey the, the auditors, I asked a question, the auditors list served and heard back for a dozen or so. Uh, we do, um, we do it in an unusual way. They do not use motions of support, they don't know what they are. Um, they appropriate, excuse me, they appropriate, so unless you have that emergency or something and declare it in good faith, motions of support are, are considered to be, I would say, a more loosey-goosey way of, of, of funding, so. And I can send those emails in that discussion if you're interested, and I just wanna burden you with, you know, a bunch of emails from different auditors. They're boring people. Um, but I just wanted to bring that, that point up, that they are, they are very, they're uncommon. I don't know if I had confirmation from any. My head's scratching, and, uh, we appropriate, we don't do motions of support.
Okay. Then, then I make a motion that we declare an emergency. If that's what you guys wanna do, that's what we gotta do. And we'll do that from now on, on every motion of support, period.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, yeah.
You say that, you wanna do it.
We won't do motions of supporting.
That's not what he said.
That's what I said.
Alright.
I think a motion of support is, is essentially a moral affirmation of an intent of a, of a financial body.
The contractor, the contractor's already gone out and fixed a lot of it. So some of this thirty-five thousand dollars is for a bill that, for work that has already been done, because he went out there in his own time and did it for the part, now the rest of it needs to be done, and that's what's in there, so.
I think the issue is financial accountability ultimately.
The motion of support just gives him a warm, fuzzy feeling good that, hey.
I think two hundred thousand, does it exceed a hundred fifty thousand?
Thirty-five thousand, we're thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand.
The trouble, we're, we're not, we're not at any level where we need to be concerned about anything further.
The trouble with it, and Mr. DiMartino, feel free to weigh in, is that under a normal process, when we agree to provide money for something, there's a whole advertisement process. You know, there's a period of time when people can see those additional appropriations. We as councilmen get to see them have a chance to look and, and question and poke at them. And this isn't saying there's anything wrong with this particular request, but by doing motions of support, support, we're circumventing that process.
I made a, I changed my motion to an emergency.
A second bit.
With a second, so we've moved on past that.
It, it's kind of a separate issue, whether it's an emergency or not, whether it's a motion of support or appropriation. We're, we're kind of intertwining the two.
You, you did understand that the building has already been rented out for a wedding reception or something, and it's not gonna get fixed if we go through a process of bidding it out, get inspects.
Didn't say anything about bidding it.
What?
I didn't say anything about bidding it. It's probably below the threshold.
I understand it is, but my point is, motion of support we've used in the past is kind of just a commitment from those of us up here that we're gonna pay this bill. If it's better with an emergency, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem either.
Done, so that we don't have to cancel.
Six of one, half a dozen the other.
An emergency is an imminent risk to someone's life or property. I don't think that, that imminent risk is there.
Health, health issues are coming at risk.
I'll show you.
I'm agreeing with emergencies, you wanna do.
Broken sewage pipe.
Broken sewage pipe has emergency.
Okay, everybody, I have a, a motion on the floor to de- declare this an emergency, and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. We'll have to follow up with paperwork on that, or a declaration.
Well, I, I, I don't understand how you, I mean, you're gonna have to get together with the, the commissions, the president of the commission, if you're gonna do a dual, it's gonna need to be a dual declaration by both bodies. I, um.
We just deemed it, we can't just deem it an emergency?
No, but you guys, you guys are appropriating, and it's gonna be paid. Randy.
I know, but.
Listen, I understand the fair is important to you, and it's gonna get, and nobody's not saying, and nobody's not saying that the work doesn't need to be done, and the work's gonna be done, and it's gonna be paid for.
But the whole thing was, let's not do motions of support, it needs to be.
No, no, no. I, I, I hear that, but you know, we've gotten, we've gotten, we've gotten in trouble with motions of support before. I remember three years ago, Larry Butcher came up here, and you guys gave him a motion support on a vehicle, and then the whole thing just went south. He already saw.
He bought a different vehicle.
I, I understand, but I'm just, but that was just.
Well, ours didn't go south.
Uh, but, but no, the, the perceived, what happened went south.
Yeah.
But that's the only thing. There's, no one's, I don't think anybody's suggesting that, that this should not get fixed and get fixed today. Everybody's on that.
So how do you suggest we do it?
They're fixing it.
No, they're not. They're not fixing it unless we give a motion of support, or we do something to say, yes.
Then move for a motion of support if you have a vote, if you, if you have.
I did.
If you have, well, all you heard was, uh, somebody objecting to it, but if you have four votes, then you could, then you have your motion of support.
Then I repeal my.
I repeal my second.
Motion of emergency and go back to my original motion of support, not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
Repeal my second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second of support for thirty-five thousand dollar repair.
Oh, we have a motion to repeal.
We, oh, a motion to repeal first, sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Okay. I'll make a motion of support not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars to repair the sewer line at the.
Second.
Community building.
We have a motion and a second. We've already had some discussions, so I'm gonna move for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries.
Alright.
Alright, now we're moving on to appropriations. LaPorte County Superior Court Number Four requesting additional appropriation from opioid restricted twelve thirty-seven or opioid unrestricted twelve thirty-eight for the budget for drug court, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents. This was held over from last month because we can take the money out of the restricted fund rather than use other funding.
Motion to approve out of restricted twelve thirty-seven.
We have a motion, and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. LaPorte County Auditor requesting additional appropriations from Lit Public Safety eleven seventy, or for four hundred thousand dollars, uh, for poll raises, uh, approved during last year's budget hearings, and a hundred thousand dollars for the Sheriff's Merit Program.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. LaPorte County Auditor requesting additional appropriation for murder boat or wind tax uh, or A R P for legal fees, ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I know, I know I supported this last time, I still support it, but as you know, the, the case is gonna move, move it on. So this would be for this amount here, if any additional money has to come, it needs to come back in front of the council. So my motion of support, this ten thousand, seven thirty-nine, any additional dollars will have to come back from the, to the.
Is the same restriction as was done on the first motion a month ago, where if this comes out, if the cases, um.
Not with that, but this, this could go on for years. There's no, there's no, there's no stopping this thing, because it's, it's been moved on already in the courts.
So repeat your motion.
Down to two steps, this for payment up till now. Any additional dollars gonna have to come back to the county council?
Well, obviously, I mean, yeah.
Out of which fund?
See, at the last meeting was.
We're gonna put a cap on it.
The court ruled that he was hacking and impersonal status, then he reimbursed the county.
That's true, but that, we could be talking about this two or three years from now. This is not going away.
There, there, there is a, um, there is a ruling that was just received, um, I, um, it's inconclusive in its essence. But one of the things that's number nine in the ruling is when reviewing relevant statutes, and this is the judge talking, when reviewing, when reviewing relevant statutes in case law pertaining to Friedman suing a government employee personally, uh, well, she said to say that the laws of Briar Patch would be an understatement. Here, clearly, Stabos was acting as the auditor of LaPorte County when he made the decisions he did not to pay the invoice claims submitted by Friedman for the work Friedman did. Every claim Friedman makes in his complaint against Stabos flows from Stabos's authority or abuse of his authority as the auditor. Um, goes on to say on the services, it would appear logical that because of this fact, Friedman would have to comply with the Indiana Tort Claims Act and provide the requisite notice. And then it goes on to say that, uh, there's questions looming regarding Stabos alleged abuse of his powers. So, I mean, she starts by saying that I acted as auditor. Um, she basically ruled and said, uh, and I'll defer to Mr. DiMartino on the rest of this, and I'll shut up, that, uh, she will not dismiss the action, nor will she, she will not grant summary judgment to Mr. Friedman, nor will she grant summary judgment to the auditor, even though she validates the reason I'm asking and asked for the money, which is that I did operate in my, uh, capacity as auditor, so. And I'll defer to you on any other comments on that or inaccuracies that I may have spoken.
Mr. DiMartino, please, will you translate this for us?
Sure, this is, this was just a motion to dismiss stage. All the court's saying needs to go forward. It survived the motion to dismiss. At some point in time, either a jury or a judge is gonna have to make the factual determination if he was in the course and scope of his employment, or he acts, acted outside his duty as auditor. So it's just saying that they both have, uh, to live another day, which, you know, probably gonna require a discovery and depositions and possibly summary judgment again, based on some other facts. So there's no finding here of in or out of his authority as the auditor. So at this point in time, based on what you all said, uh, you need to pay the bill.
Riverboat.
If later on, it says that he was acting outside the scope, then.
Okay.
So, did we have a motion?
We have a motion, but I, I haven't heard a second. It's requesting the appropriations to come out of Riverboat with the same, same restrictions as was placed, that if it is eventually deemed personal, which we don't, we heard that, we heard that bit, but we know that it's going forward, and we know courts can be anything. And so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I guess the discussion would be, is there any, what happened to putting a cap on it, that?
My fellow councilmen.
When I brought that up at the last meeting, uh, the commissioner's attorney, my ambassador, that.
Don't look at the council's attorney. I'm your attorney.
What's the council attorney say?
But you looked at me.
What's the council attorney say?
I'm sorry.
He's gotta look at someone.
How you doing?
George, what's your comment there?
Uh, so anyway, I'm not, no, it was the commissioner's attorney. I had no problem putting a cap on it. That was, I was, that was, again, I was blasted saying I couldn't do that. Do what you guys want. I mean, I, I asked for that.
We, we went from ten thousand dollars for a year to ten thousand, seven hundred for six months. So, and it's just gonna pick up speed, so.
Agreed, but that's, that will be additional vote gonna happen, Randy, this pays up to, up till now.
I believe we also need, since we're paying the bill, monthly bills or invoices from the attorney. Is that being unrealistic?
I, I would assume that if, uh, the client asked me as a lawyer to, if they can bill me monthly, that I would generate a bill monthly. I don't, that could probably be done, I'm assuming.
There are periods of time where, where nothing goes on, and a bill of seventy-two dollars, um, seventy-five dollars, so I. Uh, maybe you wanna suggest that a certain amount, what's an amount?
I'm not saying that we would pay it month, that it would be paid monthly, that it would be a, a state, a running total, so that the council knows where it's going.
I mean, they could, that could be requested, but it would probably be better, and I would respectfully request that, that you ask the attorney to submit a bill if it's five hundred dollars or more, or some, something that's material, not seventy-five dollars. That's all I, that's all I'm at respect.
My statement is a monthly statement from the attorney as to a running bill. So if it's two hundred dollars and it only goes up twenty-five dollars, then it's two hundred and twenty-five dollars the next month. That's my request.
Randy, I'll put that in my, my motion.
And the second, okay? So now there's, uh, another caveat to, just to make the, make the request and share it with us, okay?
That, that, that happened. That's not a, make a request and they don't, that's.
Yes, to seek, to seek that, okay. Any other comments?
I got, I'm a little confused. Is this the second bill that was received? Right.
Second.
Okay. Has the, Mr. Friedman been paid by any of his, or is there still some outstanding?
Uh, he's, he's completely caught up. There's, we have, we have the most recent bill, which was received a few weeks ago, the, the June, the June billings.
Excluding the disputed amounts.
That's correct.
Your disputed amounts. Your disputed amounts.
That is correct.
The June, the June bills mentioned today has been approved by the commissioners, correct?
It's, if it's received in our office from a department.
I talked to you today, is that, is it approved? Is, is the June bill been received by the commis, uh, went through the.
It's been approved by the commissioners and signed by, by them.
So you've got it already, it's up to you now to pay.
I do have it, yes.
Sir, so actually, I'm answering your question, Randy, June bill's gotta be, be paid.
We're, we're reviewing bills, we, we have BG bills that are, that are slightly older than Mr. Friedman's bills, so.
Why is that, dispute?
I, I prefer not to denigrate another department, so I, I prefer not to comment on that, but we had some issues with um, having all the line items in the bill being included in the purchase order, so we gotta go back to the commissioner's office to get that bill so that everything is billed and not just, everything's in the purchase order instead of just part of it.
Okay, but we're not that far.
It was incorrectly submitted to my office.
Mr. Stables, the June bill is not much in question, it shouldn't take too long for you to do it.
It shouldn't take too long, that's correct.
Answer the question, thank you.
Any other comment? Call for vote, all those in favor, I'm sorry.
You repeat the motion?
Yes, uh, the motion as it is is to pay the ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixteen cents at a riverboat with the following conditions, that if the court ever rules that it is personal, that Mrs. Stabos reimbursed the county and that there's also that he requests and seeks to get monthly billing from the attorney. Did I miss anything, anybody?
I think it comes out of Riverboat.
And, and then, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries, uh, moving on to La Porte County Treasurer, requesting additional appropriations from Riverboat Wind Tax or ARP funds for part-time staff for seventy-five hundred dollars and overtime for five thousand dollars. Mrs. Winsky is no longer on the.
She's, she's.
Yes, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Anybody have any questions of her or, what would the council like to do as far as a motion?
Can you give us a little bit of an explainer about what it's for?
It's uh, to complete the reconciliation for this year.
Motion to approve.
Out of what? What's my, would you like it out of?
Uh, I think, pardon?
What, where would you like it from?
ARP.
ARP, unless somebody's got a different suggestion for it.
No.
No, fine, suggesting Riverboat?
Um, uh, my suggestion would have been Riverboat, but that's.
You okay with the problem with that?
I'm sorry.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, I'd rather save the ARP.
A second, okay.
We have a motion and a second.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I know we talked with Mrs. Winsky today and I, I, I have the most confidence in the world that they can get this thing done, but the problem is that with this timeline out there that was given today, I would say that we don't at least have two people on staff that can be dedicated to us even during taxes and that's, we can bring people from other departments that was brought up today and that let them help with the, with the taxes, but we need to stay on this one, if we can't, and I would like to get an outside entity to help, Randy, and I've talked about this. I don't wanna put no pressure on anybody, but we've got to move quicker than twenty twenty-four. So I'd like to see if we gotta add that at least to that, that we need to get two dedicated people or we have to get somebody to help out.
Does the treasurer have any comment?
I agree with that, and I do have two people right now dedicated to that.
But I'd like to have it in writing. Nothing.
You, did you say you wanted it in writing?
And, or for a motion, for my motion.
Okay.
Include it in, Mr. I'm. You, you okay including it?
Yep.
Yep, okay, so we're gonna include in there is to dedicate two people for the remainder of the year to, to get that done.
At least two people.
At least two people, okay, everybody understands, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, you know, the topic of overtime here, um, is needed because you're, you need more time basically to, to keep putting towards this issue of reconciling things, um, my understanding is that your office along with others on the day before Fourth of July took off four hours early before the end of the workday. Um, can you elaborate on how things like that are impacting the need for more overtime money to be appropriated?
That, that has no bearing on overtime, I was short-staffed that day, I had two people in my office uh, in La Porte and I had one person in Michigan City and that was one of the reasons we closed early because I was so short-staffed.
So those individuals that were left wouldn't have been able to do any work while they were there for the remaining four hours of the day?
They couldn't work on the reconciliation, you knew, you need at least two people for that.
And there was no other work duties that could have been assigned in the office?
Oh, there, there were work duties.
But they got sent home instead.
Well, if, if we're gonna, if, if you're, if you want a better explanation, no one uh, bothers to ask me why my staff comes in at seven o'clock in the morning to get ready for the day. Nobody, nobody understands that my Michigan City girls, if we don't close at three o'clock so that we can count our drawers and, and uh, put those in our safe and get ready for the next day, that they're the, they're the only two people in that whole building, they're by themselves if we stay till four and count the drawers after four, and that's not acceptable to me. I, there's no security in that building after four o'clock, so I.
Why does the staff come in at seven then?
Pardon me?
Why does the staff come in at seven then if then it makes it so that they can't stay till four, which is when the rest of the county buildings are open?
First of all, we, we barely leave, very rarely leave before four o'clock, today we left at four minutes of four.
But you're saying that sometimes you guys do leave before four?
No, very, very rarely do we leave, I, in Michigan City, they leave at four or sometimes a little before four because there's no security in that building.
I.
We're on the third floor.
For, for time purpose, I would recommend since Mr. Keel is the liaison for the treasurer, I would recommend that he go see her and then come back next month and.
I'd be happy to.
Give us a report.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries, moving on to La Porte County Coroner. Um, we have requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat eleven ninety-one or Wind Tax forty-two twenty or ARP for autopsies thirty thousand dollars.
Questions?
I do, we have, we have to make, what's motion to approve out of Riverboat?
We have a motion to approve out of Riverboat, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any, yes, go ahead, sir.
So I know this isn't the first time brought it up, so I might as well bring it up, I'm sorry, so I might as well bring it up again. Um, this is not your fault, autopsies are not your fault, but they are, but they are the court's fault. We have to, the council has sent a strong message that we don't just arbitrarily throw things at us, that, this happens with, with braces for ankles and everything else, they don't collect the money. They, the courts just go ahead and throw it at us, we have to do our autopsies, a lot of these cases don't require it, it's just easy to throw it on the council and throw it on to this budget process, it's, that's not the way it's supposed to work, it never worked that way before, but we, now we have a thing where it just, it goes this way. If they can't afford the, the ankle bracelet, eh, don't worry about it, they're not gonna pay anyway. Did anybody send the information, try to get appropriate, try to get paid? No, we've gotta stop this practice, we could, we can send a signal saying that this is wrong. Just my opinion, thank you very much.
I agree, I think the, at least the prosecutor's office should be kicking in something, he wants an autopsy on every overdose.
I know which ones he did, I, trust me.
So, you know, and that, that, it's a big chunk of my budget.
I'm not picking on this prosecutor, I'm picking on it, oh.
I, I'm not picking on anybody in particular, but whoever the prosecutor is that wants them, you know, their office should have to kick in.
So we'll have the opportunity to discuss it tomorrow with the.
Let's just one, we, I've talked about it, the judges are easy enough to say it, but they don't, they don't demand payment from these entities and it just gets, it's getting easy to throw it at the council, this is extreme amount of money, we've already increased budget this year today for twenty twenty-four, unbelievable amount of money. We didn't spend that money in five to ten years before and now we're spending it in one year.
Any other comments?
I agree with Mr. Yagelski.
Thank you.
What's the average cost of an autopsy?
Um, currently it's around twenty-five hundred dollars and then toxicology runs anywhere from uh, two thirty-four to five hundred dollars depending on what we're looking for.
So this is for roughly ten autopsies?
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
This sounds right, your math's good.
Huh?
Your math's good.
So give me back.
Appreciate that, I was a little.
I mean, I still have a little money left in my budget, but I know I'm gonna use it, so, you know, before I get down to nothing.
So it's not a ridiculous amount when you look, eh, I need ten more.
Right.
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 The dollar amounts, what?
I'm not saying I won't be back, I mean, just, you know, it just depends, but.
Likely you will be back.
More likely, but let's start here and if I don't have to come back, then I don't have to come back.
I know that there's a need, Mr. President, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote no, just, I think we need to send a signal to all the, the, the different people.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, we have two nays, motion carries.
Thank you.
With the message, thank you. Uh, moving on to La Porte County Alcohol and Drug Services requesting additional appropriation from opioid restricted twelve thirty-seven or opioid unrestricted twelve thirty-eight, which leaves qualifying, or Riverboat Wind Tax or ARP for the unpaid portion from a grant for purchase of a copier.
Motion to approve out of opioid restricted.
I just have to say the amount, one thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, and then uh, you have a motion.
I apologize, but yes, I have a motion to approve out of opioid restricted twelve thirty-seven.
Say it, and we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nays? Motion carries, we move on to La Porte County Building Maintenance, we move down to the section.
President, I apologize, I uh, was writing something down, I, I just, the last thing with the, with the copier, uh, is this because the copier is out of, it's, because it's grant money?
Yes, it was grant money.
We have, we have three copiers that are available because of, we have some that are available, is it something that we could?
It's already been purchased, because of the grant money.
Has it first come into us now?
Uh, the unpaid portion.
Your Honor, I'm so sorry, on the previous item, we're not positive, looking at the statute, that it can be paid for restricted, I would wonder.
Well, then, will the council, um, um, modify to if it's not determined to be allowed, be paid for restricted, paid for unrestricted?
You okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
And this, and the person second?
Yep.
Alright, let's just do another vote just to be sure, all those in favor to move it to unrestricted, if it's not available to be out of restricted, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving now on to La Porte County Building Maintenance, we move to the section uh, on, for concession row street lighting, ten thousand, one forty-six, bathroom sink replacement, five thousand, three hundred and ninety, poultry building pole repair, four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, campground fence material for eight thousand, ninety-two dollars, Pioneer Village Electric Repair, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, and the petting zoo waterline, three thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars for a total of fifty-nine thousand, forty-seven dollars. And to be spent out of Riverboat Wind Tax or ARP.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to spend out of Riverboat, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries, uh, moving on to the next section, awnings for the Hyler Building, ninety-seven hundred dollars and La Porte County Room, uh, La Porte Court Room Painting, twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars for a total of thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollars.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'll just make a motion to, 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 with that question, so I'll make a motion for, to approve.
Out of which fund?
Wind Tax.
Out of Wind Tax, thank you, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
No question.
We have a second, now we have.
Pardon, so which court is this, please?
Uh, Second Court.
Okay.
Waiting room?
Help me out if I, these do get confusing sometimes, it's much, what, which courts are those ones that have the fund? Their fund that they have a, I have my, my, my patent this thing, but they have the, the.
The prosecutors, I mean, the, the.
Talking about probation user fees, I think they all share in that.
They all have that.
So, I have no problem, shouldn't we ask them to see if they can support this thing? Microphone, microphone, sorry, sorry.
So Mr. Yagelski asked if the, um, the courts could use the probationary user fees to support this.
Mr. Ira left, so.
That means he won't mind us just using those, right?
Oh, we can.
No, he asked the request.
Yeah, I don't think you guys can arbitrarily use those funds.
Mr. Ira. I didn't, I didn't state that to arbitrarily, I, I'm stating it, I'm stating that because this is it's an unusual amount, they wanna paint courtroom, that's fine, they have fees to help pay for that stuff.
Mr. Mr. Ira cannot approve anything over a certain dollar amount and I think this exceeds that dollar amount, so it would take.
No, I was asking for the question.
I know, I'm just pointing out that.
But I know that the judges are actually meeting over the user fees in the next week or so, so somebody might wanna.
Are you gonna paint it, are you going to paint it, or has it been painted?
It's been painted.
It's been painted.
Been painted.
So why are we coming to us now when it's been painted already?
To replenish the funds from uh.
That's not, but okay.
I, I have to, I work with the schedule that we had to get, um, when they were out of court to get it done.
You're out of courts, out of time, but, so, we, we can't do it, I, I know you knew it, that's fine, but we can't do this kind of stuff coming after because they have funds and they're available then, so. I, it, if you're only gonna have to replenishment, I would like to hold this over table just, this, this year until next month and let, let the courts decide if they can help pay for this. I change my.
So you're changing your motion?
I'd like to change the motion to table.
The person who's second, it, would they agree to table?
Uh, yes.
Separate items?
No, I don't, the awning is fine, there's no, no, just.
No more discussion, so, call for the vote, the motion and the second to table.
Okay.
Just the court painting, just the court painting, that's what I said.
So do, do you wanna amend it to, uh, did you want to amend your motion?
Okay, I'll make it easy, let's, let's take my first motion, but I'm gonna amend the first motion to make just awnings Hyler Building.
So just the ninety-seven hundred dollars.
My first motion, yes.
Out of Wind Tax.
Yes, sir.
So that's the first motion.
Second.
Second, hey, you have a question?
Yeah, in the future, I, at least I, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I prefer not to have something advertised as being for one purpose when we already spent the money for that and really this is replenishing the fund for an entirely different purpose.
When I originally, um, requested the fund, it hadn't been done, but because of the, the time it takes for the process, I got a motion of support and then we're here now.
Did our motion of support include that before, I don't think our motion of support included that item, it was fairground items.
We only did seventy-eight thousand for fairground.
Correct, I got a motion of support for, uh, from the commission to approach for a funder.
It's not the way it works.
Yeah.
But, okay, so we have on the floor ninety-seven hundred dollars uh, to come out of Wind Tax for the awning of the Hyler Building, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, uh, moving on to the Port Court Room Painting.
Motion to approve the table?
A motion to table, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to table, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Okay, motion carries the table, we have one nay?
Nay.
Two nays? Okay, um, it'll be tabled and please put it on for all business for next month.
Thank you.
And also please send an email off to Mr. Ira. We're moving on to La Porte County Sheriff's Department, requesting additional appropriations from Lit Public Safety, Riverboat, Wind Tax or ARP. Um, do we wanna do these separate, well, I'll list them, gasoline, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, merit overtime, sixty thousand and payment of unused sick time for retiring employee, we wanna do this all at once or?
Most, all at once.
I'm gonna make a motion to pay all three out of public, uh, LIT Public Safety with the caveat, your, the gas that you put at the barns, is there anybody fueling up out there that's not a public safety person? That would disqualify that?
We don't put any gas out at the barns, Randy.
Where do you, so all your gas is on cards?
Yes.
So are anybody getting, with using cards that you're paying for with this one seventy-five that's not a public safety person?
Yeah, there's several groups such as Building Maintenance, the Commissioner's Office, um, hazmat probably would be considered in that. So there are several entities.
My motion that the fuel, uh, how much have we got in Riverboat, we got enough in there?
Would you, would you go seventy-five percent of it then?
Can we do a portion of it? Can we do a portion of it?
I'm sorry, you said we have six hundred. Okay, so there's plenty there.
So if we say seventy-five thousand out of, there's more, there's more sheriff's deputies in our.
Right, those individual offices that I just said, very minimal.
Hundred thousand of that out of the public safety lit, seventy-five thousand dollars out of the Riverboat for the gasoline, merit overtime out of lit, and the payment for the sick, uh, retired days out of lit.
Second.
Sheriff, is it possible for you to break out in some sort of reporting what portion is, is being used by sheriff's deputies versus what's being used by like Building Maintenance, since this is all on cards? building maintenance, since this is all on cards?
Yeah, I, I can actually probably tell you that pretty much right now. I'm gonna say probably about ninety to ninety-five percent of all that.
Way more than what I just said.
By the sheriff's office. The other entities, uh, it's, it's very small. We're not talking about it a large amount of money that these other agencies are using. Very small.
All right, then I made my motion to one fifty out of public safety lit and twenty-five thousand out of.
Riverboat.
Riverboat.
I, I second that.
Okay.
Best of fun.
Everybody understand? We're good. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you.
I had a question.
Got a question, please.
Well, regarding the gasoline, um, do we still get that gas tax refund?
We haven't received that gas tax refund in, in several years. You're talking about the gas rebate. Uh, yeah, that was one of the reasons why all these other entities were put into the sheriff's office years ago. Uh, I believe it was well before my time is because the state of Indiana offered a tax rebate. Uh, and so if we had all these other entities put on ours, we got a bigger rebate from the state of Indiana. It's my impression talking to Connie and Bob Parks at the garage, that program has been gone for quite some time.
Okay, yeah, that's the reason it was done. It was to get that money and help, help the budget.
Help, yeah.
Sheriff, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way now, since it's not an issue, since we're, you know, constrained by P S Lit, that we can spin those other departments off and that way when, when you come for gas, it can be purely P S Lit?
At least make the request separately.
I, I, I suppose. I, I just think for efficiency and, and simplicity, it was just all put on one and I don't mind that, that these other agencies do use the sheriff's office budget. Again, we're only talking, uh, probably, I'm just gonna throw out ten thousand dollars a year out of the sheriff's budget.
We just don't wanna run foul, foul of the statute.
Right.
So.
That, that would have.
Sheriff, you'd know that.
Right, that would have to be done during budget hearings to give these budgets back in, but, yeah, we can begin to look at that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Be ready for more.
Okay, so if you can, tomorrow you're coming in, so if we can just speak about that for a moment, which other groups do it? So we can then go back and take a look or go forward and look at their budget.
Or just, or just keeping, having reported out, whichever works better.
Which, it, okay, we can discuss that tomorrow.
Looks like you just got assigned homework.
I don't mind homework.
I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you, Mr. DiMartino. Uh, one quick question. The payment for the unused sick time, where did you guys want that to come out of yet?
Lit.
Lit, also, okay.
So that way it's all able to be paid right away.
Thank you.
I got one thing further. It's more for the council than, you know, we haven't have, been having a lot of talk here tonight and today a little bit about autopsies and that. If it'd be okay with the sheriff, maybe tomorrow someone from the detective bureau could possibly come and there's, there's other, there's a reason why through these autopsies and I think it needs to be explained, uh, by someone that's directly involved, get the, get the law enforcement point of view instead of just the prosecutor. And really the prosecutor is probably filing the law enforcement request anyway, but I think that needs to be explained to all of us a little bit.
It's, it's kind of a joint between the, and the prosecutor and law enforcement is why these autopsies are being done. I would love to go in further on maybe why some of this stuff is done. Some of these are, are still pending, so I don't wanna speak too much in a public comment. And there, there's probably some HIPAA laws there that would prohibit us to talk about some of these autopsies. But I would love to sit down and have a conversation with you, maybe in a private setting and, and explain this further.
Okay, well.
And one other thing you done?
No, I was just gonna say, he wouldn't have to, I don't think he'd have to explain exactly who, but to the purpose of.
The purpose is to prove these cases, you know.
Absolutely.
We've gotta be able to prove that certain individuals died of an overdose and that, you know, the defense is gonna be, well, did you do an autopsy? And if we say no, they're gonna say, well, how do you know he didn't have a heart attack? How do you know he didn't have this medical issue? How do you know that wasn't this that caused the death? How can you one hundred percent be on a shadow of doubt say that the overdose killed him? And that's the reason for the autopsies and the toxicology test that the coroner was just up here trying to describe.
I agree, but she's also mentioned in the past that she didn't really have an understanding, this was months ago, why so many autopsies? And I think there is a reason.
Absolutely, there is a reason, valid reason, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Bolner, I've actually came and we had a meeting and he told us that I, I don't disagree that there has to be more cases, but it's gone up a hundred, though. It's not just from small numbers gone up. Uh, we can't, if, if you're, if you're not gonna defend every case that's out there, that, that's, that'd be different, but they don't go to court through every one of these cases.
But they may.
Okay, so we can pay thousands and thousands of dollars for that and I get the, the point of it. Sometimes is it worth it at the end?
But, and tell that to a family member that just lost their son or daughter.
Understand.
Okay.
That's, that's the situation we're in, not sometimes, you know.
Yep. Or husband or wife.
Whatever. So with that done, I just wanna, congratulations to Jim Szysinski with retiring with, I think, forty?
Forty-one years dedicated to the sheriff's office.
His, uh, payment of unsick, unused sick time, that's for him, so.
Yes, thank you.
Kudos to him.
Yep, yes, thank you from the entire council.
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving on to La Porte.
You got a vote on it.
Oh, I thought we did.
Call for the vote.
And I might want to say one more thing, though. Not about autopsies, but.
I think we just.
I thought we, did we not vote?
No.
Okay, we will vote on it again or for his time, whichever. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If you did, I apologize.
Nays? Motion carries. I thought we had done it and then he started discussion as he started to walk away. So we're good. We're covered. Yeah, we're talking good.
On a side topic, I'd just like to second this gentleman's motion to create a sheriff H I C account. If I can get that up for vote, please. Point of order, you're out of line.
Except I just wanted to make one comment before it was, not anything with the vote, but about Chief Szysinski, why, uh, and I called him chief because he was my chief deputy for eight years and, uh, he was a darn good one. He's a good officer. I mean, um.
I, I believe he started in, was it nineteen eighty-three?
Yes.
And Commissioner, or Council, yeah, Councilman Keel. I don't even know if he was alive back in nineteen eighty-three.
He was in kindergarten when Yagowski came up.
Making it thirteen years old.
Now, that's probably a fact.
Yeah.
Okay, can we move on now to La Porte County E nine one one without taking another vote on the same thing?
You're right, you're right, Randy, using.
Uh, request, requesting additional appropriation from Lit Public Safety, eleven seventy, or Riverboat eleven ninety-one, or wind tax or A R P for Nutanix five-year contract renewal for a hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. President, if we can, if we can, I'd take Lit Public Safety for one fifty-six five fifty. If there's a reason why we can, I can always change my.
No, if we can, we can do it.
Second.
And I'll explain.
You have a second permit.
We have a, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Is there?
What is Nutanix?
It is our virtual software. The, um, I have the whole thing broken down back here in the back, but this is, uh, this is our CAD system and if, and without it, we're pretty much, it would affect about everybody, the sheriff's department also, and on this piece of paper that I gave you shows the CAD that we use, the CAD the sheriffs use and the other entities use, uh, countywide in blue. And it is our entire thing.
So it's very important.
Thank you. Of our servers, our joint servers between sheriff's software.
It is obviously a big discount to do it for a five-year period instead of every single year.
That is correct.
Yes, it is.
Okay, that answered my question.
The obvious, but I wanna state it anyway.
I was gonna ask the question if it could be broken down, but if you, um, if you're getting a good discount, why, all right.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. I believe we had a motion. Getting late, a little tired. One to go. Okay, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries.
In this, in this software also, uh, Roscoe in my department in I T, he can bring all the CAD servers up on one screen and check them all at the same time and, and even, you know, if there's a problem, he can actually work on it there and fix it. And, uh, that's what this is, so. It's very important and I thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
La Porte County Recorder requesting additional appropriation from county-elected official training fund for training, continuing education for the recorder, the clerk, the treasurer, the auditor, the surveyor and the county council. Is, and the county council is, is only applicable when it is used for A I C conference, which is what we have used this for. Uh, for ten thou, not to exceed ten thou, well, no, it just says ten thousand dollars.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, but I have a question real quick. Why is a recorder requesting for other department?
Because it comes out of her fund.
It's coming out her fund?
Yes. Yep, if you'll look at it, it's the.
And I'll make two motions on that.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Counsel and attorney comments. Would anybody like to make a comment?